We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings which aligns with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. Tune into our hybrid style board meetings online. On either zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you're logged into zoom or are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for for instructions on how to submit your written comments. Call meeting to order. Scott, would you do the roll call please?
Certainly. Here we go. Board President Yip Chuan.
Here.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Here.
Board Clerk Min Nao.
Here.
Board Member Liang.
Here.
Board Member Si.
Is Board Member Si logged on via Zoom?
He is not logged on at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, our board student reps will be joining us later. Okay, item number three, review and approve the closed session agenda.
Move to approve the closed session agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Scott.
Board Member Liang.
Yes.
Board Clerk Yu.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
And Board Member Si.
Okay, is there comments from the public?
We have no virtual hands raised and no green card submitted. No comments at this time.
Okay, the meeting will adjourn to closed session to discuss and/or take action on the following items. Conference with legal counsel and conference with labor negotiator.
We do a motion to adjourn a close session?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn the
Close session.
To close session.
Motion to adjourn a close session.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second, Scott.
Board Member Liang.
Yes.
Board Clerk Yu.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes. Okay, we're going to go to closed session now. Thank you so much.
We are live and ready to go.
Good evening again, everyone. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yip Chuan. Welcome to this evening of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which aligns with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act of opening meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style board meeting online on either Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you are logged into Zoom or you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instruction on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comments on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called upon. Instruction for both are also listed on each agenda. There are copies available at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialists will take it from here.
Thank you so much, President Yip Chuan. So as our virtual audience will see on their screen, to make a public comment, virtually, you'll be on the Zoom platform. You will see a hand icon by your name. Please click on that. That's to indicate that your request to make a public comment. We will call the names in the order they are received. Please wait to be called upon. Once your name is called, we will enable your audio, and you will have two minutes to speak. We just ask that you please be patient, and the board president will call on any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and Point 3, preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3, prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do provide special accommodations at our board meetings. If you do need any special accommodations, you should contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance, and we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcast and streamed live on both Zoom and YouTube. All recordings are posted on our musd.org website. Closed captioning is available on Zoom. You would click the closed captioning, and a live transcription will appear on your screen. If there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda, they are also public documents and available to the public. Thank you so much, and back to you, President Yip Chuan.
Thank you, Scott. Did you check to see if there were any public comments?
When we get to the public comment portion, yes.
Okay.
So we're reconvening into open session number six.
Okay. In closed session, the board provided staff direction regarding item 5A. The board approved settlement and the compromise agreement proposed by staff for item 5B. Okay, item number eight, can I get a motion to review and approve the open session agenda?
Move to approve the open session agenda.
Okay, just a minute.
Staff would like to pull an item under 18C.5. By removing this item, that means the P-16 will be removed from the personnel report under 18A.6.
Motion to approve the removal of, what number, Wendy, again?
18.C.5.
Motion to approve the removal of 18C.5?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Is there any nays? Seeing none? Motion carries? Okay, so flag salute. Today, we're just going to do the flag salute without the NJROTC. Clerk Men, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will be seated. Okay, 10, are there comments from the public?
Yes, we do have hand raised. Let's see who we're gonna go to. First one is Jacqueline Romero. Jacqueline, we are gonna enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. Please take yourself off mute and go right ahead.
And Superintendent Cheryl Jordan. First and foremost, I know you guys are in a tough position with what happened last week. I had entered the meeting late, unfortunately, because I had not heard that the meeting was gonna happen and happened to be on Facebook and noticed that council member Karina Dominguez was very proactive in allowing her Facebook to be used to notify the community of the special meeting you were holding. So when I joined the meeting, I was definitely late, and I felt like I walked into a party that already started and unfortunately was unaware of the full scope of the conversation, but did turn around and listen to the full meeting later. The ending of the meeting, there was a conversation regarding requiring parents to sign an independent studies form. For the record, I'm an educator for the American Financial Educators, and I teach code and ethics. So I want a point of clarity. First, the reason why I bring up where I teach is because I teach code and ethics. And requiring parents to sign an independent studies form, to me, seems that there is some ethical issues with that. And the reason why I say that is I've been using this form in the past for many years, actually, to allow my kids to allow my kids to take the short-term independent studies. In order for me to use that form, my kids must be out of school for five days minimum, and there is a maximum, I think it was increased to 15 or more, sorry, 15 days. And you can only use that one time. Then there's a long-term form, which are independent studies, which is 15 or more days, which, again, does not fit the criteria for the four days. So I feel like there is an issue here with the integrity of what you're asking parents to do. And again, to fund the four days, it seems like it's a way to, you know, really twist the and miss, in my opinion, misrepresent what we're asking, what we're doing. Sorry about that. So again, in the spirit of the law, I think we need to relook at what you're asking parents to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Next up, we have Sherri Miller-Lowe. Sherri, we are gonna enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please take yourself off mute.
Thank you. I'm Sherri Miller-Lowe, fifth-grade teacher at Senate Elementary. I do wanna kind of point out and comment on the way things went down this weekend. I did pay attention to the meeting last Thursday, so I knew there was some question about the process and what was coming from the county. But I felt like we were kind of hit off guard as far as staff. When the notices came out, they were very confusing. Not only that, but they were going out to parents, and parents were coming and asking us questions. I just felt like, I mean, I had sat, I've been at my third hour of putting together curriculum for the week, and then to have that hit me, and then parents coming, and I can't imagine what it's like to be a principal in that position. So I do think the district needs to look at their messaging. Also, we're all over the media. My question, last night I saw the news about our dashboard not being updated, and I do have concerns about parents saying that teachers just want a day off. So my question, I have a lot more to say, but my question regarding the dashboard is where I really wanna focus. I did notice it was updated today. However, I have questions about the numbers since, and that's why I wanted to question whether the dashboard numbers are only based on students who tested positive and teachers who tested positive through the district testing, because I know I had several students on Monday, last Monday, who were out with COVID, who were tested previously. I know teachers that were positive that did not show up at our school that are, we have a zero. So I'm questioning the dashboard and what the real numbers are, because I think the community needs to know the real numbers and how many students are out. A third of my class was out all week last week. And I don't know when the last, this is the first days, last two days, where I had all students except for one, in I don't know how many months. I've had students out for long periods of time, from a week to two weeks, out sick. So that's my concern is, parents aren't understanding it's not teachers not wanting to work. It's actually kids not being available. And it's the first time I was able to get in front of students in the last two days, albeit virtually and in person, so that I had everybody and I could address the needs of all the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri, and that was our last virtual hand raised. And there are no in-person comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, we're moving on to item 11. MusD 2018-2021 Strategic Goals. Build a culture of "we" that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathway that allows students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in the learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Okay, we're on to superintendent's report on the recognition.
Thank you, President Yip Chuan. Tonight, I would like to start with recognizing our Rancho seventh-grade girls' basketball team. They have been exemplary in completing a championship season. And a few years ago, we also recognized our Rancho basketball team. So Rancho, you've got something going there, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing to keep it always, always higher. So I'd like to recognize our members of the team. And I shall just pull them up real quickly.
I just reshared that with you, too, if you need it.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. So Scott, would you mind putting the team photo up? And while Mr. Forstner is getting the team photo up of our Rancho seventh-grade girls' championship team, I would like to first start with our players and then our coach. And several of our players are watching, either live or as part of our panelists. So I'd like to start with Addison Tuitt, Angelina Garcia, Anika Yalavarti, Athena Cruz, Rinaland David, Kayla Fuentes, Anaya Dominguez, Karina Zankovitch, Sumaya Mohammed, Sydney Alan Krita, Pardika Sadhu, and Shri Garp. And they're led by Coach Jim Burns. Congratulations to all of you. And I will come by this week, Mr. Burns, to give you your certificate for the team. Yes. Next, I would like to recognize our Milpitas High School and actually, a number of our coaches across the district who have taken the time to make sure that students in need had Christmas gifts during the holiday season. And we have some of them led by Milpitas High School football coach Kelly King in the house, and also others are virtual. So I'm going to go ahead and call up your names, and then we'll take a picture with those of you who are here. And I'd like to say that one aspect of being on a team, and I know Coach Burns and his team know this as well, is that you're focused on not self, but on all, and also the greatness that comes when everybody is working together for a common goal. And in this case, I understand from Principal Satan that the call for gathering gifts for students in all of the schools that requested it was, I believe, only two days, and you showed up with gifts at the door. And I happened to be at Weller when two young men were assisting Principal Satan in organizing the gifts. And I can tell you the excitement and I won't say wonder, but it was like a humble curiosity that the two boys exhibited as they asked Principal Satan about where did these gifts come from? And especially when she told them that, yes, you'll be able to pick one out, too. It was just, just really a human connection. And so I want to thank you for your diligence in making sure that our community, especially our youth in the community, have opportunities to feel connected. That's really what our culture of "we" is about, is making sure that everyone feels connected and sees themselves in what they learn here and do in our schools. So I'd like to ask you, Coach Kelly King and Coach Ray to come up. And as you're coming up, I'm gonna read the names of our other coaches, too. And while I'm reading them, if the Board and staff, Board and Cabinet could go ahead. We also have Coach Victor Rodriguez, Coach Ralph Meredith, Coach Trevor Demick, he used to be one of my students, Coach Victor Kangemi, Coach Mike Matthews, Coach Ray LZ, he's here, Coach Puna Iona, who has also assured that our teams have medical assistance on the field. Coach Victor Perret, Coach Alfredo Martinez, and Coach Adam Perez. Thank you for being there for our student and youth community. Now it's my opportunity to share our biweekly COVID report with the Board, and there were a couple of public comments, and their questions that they asked or comments that they made will be addressed in this report. So first, I'd like to give some county optics. The county has adjusted its case rate and also its percentage of different groups with vaccination as we are beginning to go through the transition of the term "fully vaccinated" and merging that with boosted in the public health system. So I'd like to point out that the case rate is per 100,000. And you'll see that the case rate of COVID with Omicron has greatly jumped since the last report on December 14th. Of those who are vaccinated, the case rate is 98 out of 100,000. Of those who are unvaccinated, it's 312.5 out of 100,000. When I reported back on December 14th, the vaccinated case rate was eight. The unvaccinated was around 32, and the overall was also very low. And this plays into what we experienced last week here in our community in the Milpitas Unified School District community. Here are our latest county vaccination rates as of January 7th. You'll see that those ages 5 through 17 have a vaccination rate of 64%. Those who are eligible to get the booster is 59.6%. And all ages is 82.4%. Now, there's a key difference here, since Omicron, eligible with a booster. If you're eligible and you had the booster, then as we look at quarantine, which we'll hear more about in the next five to 10 days, their quarantine time is essentially none if you are a close contact. However, if you are vaccinated and you're eligible for a booster, but you have not received your booster, you are considered, along with unvaccinated, and would then need to quarantine if you're a close contact. Here, I'd like to point out our case rates, and this is in response to one of our public comments. So on January 3rd, so that would capture all of the cases that we had prior to coming back on January 3rd for school. And you see, we have a total of 142 at that point. As of January 7th, which is this past Friday, we have a total of 332. And those COVID cases that you see on our dashboard are cases that are identified through our school district, through our testing system. What you see to the right, all COVID cases as of January 10th, those are the cases that are, in addition to those that we've identified through our testing system, those are the cases that are reported to us either by parents or by employees because they've received results outside of our testing system at another test site. So yes, there are, as you see here, double that we know of, and we're still working on updating because the numbers are overwhelming. We are still working on updating our case count. As we reported last week, we shared with the Board the numbers. This is just our classroom staffing needs. So this would include teachers, specialists who provide instruction, as well as paraprofessionals and behavior intervention staff. And you see that last week, we had a high of 86 total jobs on January 7th, with only 47 filled and 33 unfilled, with an unfill rate of 38%. And the way that we fill those, as I described last week, was by combining classes, pulling people from the district office who have credentials, as well as those such as Mr. Forstner, who also happens to have a substitute credential. And at the school sites, we pulled counselors and, in some cases, school psychologists. What this means is that those people who are filling in in the classroom are not able to perform the services that they normally would. So our ability to provide operations for school is greatly limited, particularly as we look at providing operations to our learners for providing services to our learners. This slide compares last week on Monday, again, the classroom staffing needs with yesterday on Monday. And you see that there is a drop, a drop by about 22% or 18 people. And in part, that's because while there was a need last week for substitutes for some of those people, they were in quarantine, but they were actually well enough to teach virtually. So now, some of them are able to teach virtually. This I shared last week as well with the Board, and it provides data on student attendance. We're gonna focus on January 8th going forward, excuse me, January 3rd going forward for 21-22. And as I reported last week, the numbers above in the first column are an average of the years 17, 18, 18, 19, and 19, 20, so the years prior to COVID shelter in place. And you see that we add anywhere from 95 to 96.8% attendance and the number of absences below that. For this past week, we had anywhere from 92% to 93.19% attendance. And you see the red numbers, for example, on Thursday. And you see the red numbers, for example, on Thursday underneath the 92.79%, it was 3.87% less than the average of the three years prior on that same timeframe. You also see that there were 735 absences, just as the years prior, there were 343 absences. You see under that, 392 more absences, that's in comparison of 735 to 343. Then, and the the teal color, you see plus COVID absences, 599. The reason it's separated from the 735 is because those are students who are out for some reason related to COVID, whether it was because they were actually ill, because they were positive, or because they might have been quarantining. And so that would be an additional 599. On Friday, we have a issue with the data and we need to validate it. Yesterday on Monday, as one of our teachers who made public comment shared where she said that she hasn't had a full class in several weeks and did have a full class, I think she said minus one yesterday, you see that our data here is similar to her experience. Because yesterday we had a 97.18% attendance. With 300, excuse me, with 288 absences. Which actually is 87 fewer absences than the three, average of the three prior years. And so while we had 147 who had COVID issues that we can count towards ADA. They are able now to tap into real time learning. In addition to those students who are not able to be in class because of COVID-related illnesses or quarantine. We shared with you last week that I, even though we were able to make sure there was an adult in a classroom with the students, even if that meant combining classes, we cannot say that we were providing the best instruction possible for those students. In many cases, they simply had packets and some might consider those packets busy work. By this week, offering students the opportunity based on AB 130. If parents felt concerned for their children's health or safety, parents could participate in either short-term or long-term independent study. One of our other public speakers talked about how in years past, it had to be a minimum of five days. That's correct. But with COVID, that's been adjusted. She also talked about how it had to, how in years past, it could only be done one time for short-term independent study. That's correct. Under AB 130, with the conditions of COVID, it can be multiple times as long as it doesn't accumulate more than 14 days. Once it gets to 15 days, then the student would be considered long-term independent study. And as we've shared with all of our parents, those who decided that they would like to have independent study because of their concerns for their child's health or safety. If they wanted to do long-term independent study, we can provide that for them. And our principals will share with them or have shared with them what the conditions are for that. AB 130 also allows us to have up to 30 days to make sure that all parents who want the independent study and in particular, the long-term independent study, that they have had a conference either with the principal as the program manager or directly with the teacher about the long-term independent study. We have 30 days after, from the date of commencement to complete those contracts. Here, I've illustrated some, an empty bus. An empty classroom. And COVID testing sign. With nobody around. This is how we felt. This is not just how we felt, but this is what we experienced last week. We heard that all of our bus drivers were out, including the substitute bus driver, and so we had to pull grounds people. We heard that in some cases, we were out of antigen tests. We also heard how much time and effort is being put into making sure that we are able to contact trace all of the students who may be close contacts. And yes, there were multiple communications that went out over the weekend because we learned from the public South Carolina County Office of Education, a couple of things. We learned for one thing that we don't have the authority to declare district-wide quarantine. And so we wanted to make sure that the public understood that we know that we can't do that now after talking with our county office of education superintendent, Dr. Dewan. We also know that there were some parents who thought that they had to have independent study. So we needed to make it abundantly clear that an independent study is only an option if a parent feels a concern for their child's health or safety per AB 130. So we sent out the initial information on Friday. We sent out another more simplified, clear message on Saturday. And because we still had confusion, we had some of our teachers, including our public speaker, spending a lot of time on the phone or via email with parents trying to explain what the situation was. We had principals doing the same as well as some of us in the district office, working through the weekend, trying to make sure people understood these three things. There is no quarantine district-wide. If you are already on quarantine, you remain on quarantine. We are open. All of our schools, all of the classrooms, all of the offices. If the teacher is not ill, the teacher is in the classroom, or if the teacher is not on a leave, the teacher is in the classroom. And again, it is not a requirement that parents do independent study. And I'd like to share that today, Tuesday, the 11th, we have 96% attendance. 4% of that 96 is in person on our campuses. The other 96% of that 96%. No, it's 100% of the 96%. They are on independent study. And all of them on our independent study this week are experiencing live synchronous learning with their teacher from bell to bell. Just as the students who are here on campus are doing. Milpitas is unique, just as every community is unique. Different communities throughout the county and the state are dealing with these issues in different ways. Not all school districts experienced what we experienced last week. Some, for example, Palo Alto, they did not have an issue, I understand, of classroom staffing. They had an issue of support beyond the classroom. And so they're trying to deal with it by requesting volunteers from the community to support them. I know that some school districts also are trying to attack the issue of how do we contact trace by looking to see if it's possible, instead of doing that, to submit a, you may have been in contact with a person with COVID, similarly to what we do for chicken pox, the measles. So every community is trying to struggle with this crisis that we have at this time, this surge. We know that this surge, based on the experience of other countries, is supposed to spike. Look, and locally and in our country, the spike is expected to plateau around the third week of January. So when we come back next week, hopefully, we will be at that plateau. Additionally, our teachers, our principals, they have to relearn what we've learned all this time about quarantining because it literally changed on Saturday. And we're still trying to figure it out, but we will get to a point where we can share it with the public with more confidence so that we are ready for implementing it next week. And I want to thank you, board, because the decision that you made in supporting staff's recommendation is very difficult. And we know from parents, a few who spoke up at a public comment that night, that for some parents, they were quite concerned because they weren't sure if this independent study was something that they could engage in. Or if they even wanted to engage in it. We also know that a large number of parents, either through parents, excuse me, either through teachers or principals or even emails to yourselves and phone calls to yourselves, asking, why can't we have the option of independent study? So you made, you helped us make that an option for them in a way that is meaningful for all. And as we persevere through this this peak that we're in right now, I know that we are learning new information. I know that we are constantly pivoting. And I know that with our team, both here at the dais, as well as in the classrooms, on the grounds, in the offices, in the student nutrition kitchen. I know that we are the best team to make sure that all of our learners are served well. And we have an excellent governance board team to help us do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any public comments out there?
We do have two hands raised. We'll go ahead and go to Cheryl Oldham. We are going to enable your audio, Cheryl. Take yourself off mute and you'll have two minutes to speak. Just take yourself off mute, Cheryl. You're still muted. We could go on to our other commenter and then maybe Cheryl can figure out, we'll re-enable your audio. It is Jackie Romero. Please take yourself off mute and you have two minutes. Go right ahead.
I just want to take a moment and thank you Superintendent Cheryl Jordan for, yes, always being available to respond even on the weekend. I don't think people know how hard you really work and those late night messages are really appreciated. I did ask the question on regarding the, again, the code. I appreciate that you gave me the update on AB 130, so I stand corrected. I just wish that the forms actually declared that because I have a form in my possession and it says nothing about that. And I utilized the form on October. So if you maybe could kindly update the forms, I think that would help parents understand what they're signing so they don't feel like they're signing something out of integrity, like somebody like me is concerned about. Also, yes, the board, thank you so much for making it an option. There are a lot of kids out there that had COVID and were still showing up. Unfortunately, my grandson went back to school without COVID and unfortunately, you know, he was exposed at school. And so that's a unfortunate situation that happened because parents were not aware of making sure the kids were tested before they returned. So I do appreciate the hard work that you guys are doing. And I just want to just thank the teachers. I have the opportunity of listening to the teachers today and they're being very mindful about the communication they're having with the kids and they're being extremely positive and telling the kids that they're going to get through this. And so I really appreciate that because I think 50% of getting through this is mindset. And the meditation that Mrs. Osborne did with the kids yesterday was also very beneficial. So I think the teachers also need to be acknowledged for their work in stepping up and getting this to happen again like they did in 2020. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Cheryl Oldham, if you'd like to still make your comment, we've enabled your audio. You have to unmute yourself. And it looks like she's still having some technical issues. Cheryl, there'll be opportunities later on in the meeting for a public comment. And that's it for the public comments. Back to you, President Yip Twong.
Thank you very much, Scott. Boards, are there any questions or comments? If not, I mean, I just want to thank the teachers and the staff and Milpitas families for the support and for sharing with us your concern. And, you know, especially Superintendent here, she's worked really hard night and day and I don't know if she even like slept much during this past week. But you know, the recommendation that was brought to us, we appreciated and because of that, you know, I think our students are much safer in their environment. Okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Superintendent, for the report. We're moving on to item number 13, Superintendent Executive Cabinet Reports.
Thank you. I would like to start with our Human Relations Assistant Superintendent Jonathan.
Thank you, Cheryl. Were you going to do your Navigator video series after this or no?
No, because our esteemed video people were busy working on, or person was busy working on communications and wasn't able to continue.
Didn't want to miss our video, that's all. Okay, thank you. Yes, as you've heard, it was a very busy couple of weeks here in Milpitas Unified School District and and I'm just so proud of our district office teams that went out to the school sites to support our classified and certificated staff and so many functions and responsibilities. I took on the wonderful opportunity to be of support over at Curtner Elementary School. I just want to thank the staff there in the front office, Kim and Jessica. I did tell, okay, good. And the amazing teachers and support staff. Everybody was all hands on deck. And I just appreciate them so much. You know, while I was there, I got to serve as a teacher, campus monitor, principal, health clerk, PE para, and food service. As well as a support and counseling, I think. I don't know if I said that. In the district, yeah, in the district, I did testing. So school nurse, health clerk, and the district office, I got to be a night custodian a couple of times last week. And I say that with all due humility because, you know, that's what I love about this district is that we ask and find ways to help each other and and the kids come first and we all know that. And it just adds value to what we do each and every day. And so it was an honor to be there and I'm really proud of my HR team. They went and assisted different school sites based on whatever they needed. And again, to my colleagues here at the dais, as well as all of our support staff here at the district office, couldn't be more proud how we could support our teachers and support staff at each of our schools. I'll leave it at that.
We'll just go right down the line. Good evening, as shared by Superintendent Jordan and just recently here by Assistant Superintendent Brunson. We, Prethea and I would also like to highlight some of the collaborative things that we did as our district team members went out to support the sites and there are significant needs that they had on their campuses. On Thursday and Friday, we cleared the deck here. There was nobody here in the building if you came by. Our departments had all of our staff out at the sites, supporting absent administrators, teachers, classified educator vacancies, as well as doing other tasks. I think one of my favorite things was doing bus duty at the end of the day and seeing those happy faces of parents picking up their kids and kids ending their day. So we've all contributed to the sites last week, but we also continued this week, keeping everybody going back. everybody going back out on Monday again to our assigned sites that we went to last week to make sure that we were consistent in supporting our staff. Clearly, there wasn't the need as we had reduced students on site. There was therefore reduced needs for testing, and then also reduced, as Superintendent Jordan mentioned, reduced needs for vacancies because some of our teachers were able to teach remotely from home if they were on quarantine. So we also would just like to thank our classified staff, our certificated teachers, our specialists, our support providers for just really pivoting very, very quickly and supporting our students both in person and remotely, and that includes all of our special educators who supported our students with exceptional needs. I'll turn it over to Prethi.
Thank you. So this evening, as we honored a couple of our sports teams, Superintendent Jordan talked about what it means to be an M U S D family. The L and D report from Mary Jude, myself, also building off of Assistant Superintendent Brunson, highlights our collective efforts last week and this week to support sites and further demonstrates our strengths as an M U S D family. For example, last week between H R, Business Services, and L and D, we had twenty-five district office personnel onsite to fill those unfilled positions that we talked about earlier. Some of the specific ways we leaned in to support on our sites was answering phones, administering COVID testing, monitoring isolation rooms, helping with lunch duty, drop-off and pickup duty, subbing in classrooms. Personally, I subbed in a TK classroom at Pomeroy, which was a definite change of pace from my usual day here, as well as my teaching days when I was a high school English teacher. So last Friday, I was leading morning circle, reading books, singing songs, and literally jumping up and down on the rug with our, some of our youngest students. And it was actually a welcome change of pace. But via phone calls, texts, spreadsheets, we coordinated the needs across the district and worked together to fill them in as best we can. That concludes our learning and development report.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I echo all my colleagues shared with the staff went to the school side to help, we truly work together as a unified school district. We we are unified, we're a family, we help each other. And I think the decision the Board and the district made was really a prudent and sound decision and to put our student at the first place and our families. Some of you probably heard yesterday Governor Newsom released the state twenty-two, twenty-three budget proposal. And the proposal was very positive for education. This coming week, and staff will receive more detailed information from school services of California. We are going to up the work on our second interim budget update, and we will share that with the Board on March eight, at the next Board meeting. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we do not have a principal report tonight because we wanted to allow Dr. Lopez to focus on what he needs to right now for dealing with the school site.
Thank you very much, Cabinets, for your report. Moving on to item number fourteen, the Board Group Agreements. The Board, the Board Group Agreements are provided for the Boards ready reference as the reminder of our context as elected official per Board bylaws, nine thousand one amended on November twenty-six, twenty nineteen, Board Members and Superintendent agrees to keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus, ask questions for our own understandings, be open and honest with each other, no surprises, including unapproved communication by law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and or born. Beware that our behavior in the community reflects us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges, and open sessions, and in advance of public Board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Active, actively support the culture of we in action, deed, and community opportunity to serve the students and parents of Mel Peters Unified School District. Okay, moving on to item number fifteen, Board Communication Request. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School Board Members are requests, may request the placement of items in future board agendas, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The Student Board Representative report on schools, school and student activities. Reports are limited to ninety seconds each. Do we have any Board Student Reps here?
Yeah, we have two of the three who are remotely participating. Did you want to?
Can you call on them? I'm sorry, I can't see who's on.
Sure. We have Student Board Rep Mira Bakhta from our middle, college, high school. Mira, if you're there, please, there you go, enable and take yourself off mute, and you're ready to go.
Hi, schoolward and various community members present here today. With the transition into the online platform for the week, our school has been, has obviously had to pause some of our projects. However, we have still been able to hold club meetings online with the Literato Society, the Poetry Club, and our school newspaper. And as we are, and we are, as a school, are still encouraging many of our students to research potential solutions for their community impact projects. Recently, last week, we met with Pilot City, who has been generous enough to help us secure internships with a variety of companies all throughout the Bay Area through their program. We thank the school board members and the superintendent who were there to see the program's demonstration and met the founder of said program. We look forward to working with Pilot City and their programs and pursuing projects relating to our career pathways and even our community impact projects. Lastly, the Mel Peters Middle College High School would like to wish all families across the district a happy In-Service Day and Martin Luther King Day. We would also like to wish everyone well and to be safe over the long weekend.
Thank you so much, Mira. Next, we have Student Board Rep Kimberly Lopez of Calaveras Hills High School. Kimberly, if you hear us, please turn your video on, take yourself off mute. You know what to do, go right ahead.
Yeah, hello. We started off strong, and the students had a great mentality at the start of the semester. We do community building activities the first two days of the semester. And so far, the school is open, but almost all students have chosen to attend virtually because of the cases right now with Omicron. And before we have entered this time of quarantine, clubs have been hey a lot, but the garden club has raised money for their garden in the sixty building through plant cells and grants, and was able to purchase some fruit trees along with lots of other plants. The space will be open for classes to use once they are done. The Lion Clubs raised close to one thousand dollars with their gift basket raffles in December. And right now, the basketball is on hold due to COVID. And that is it.
Thank you so much, Kimberly, and that's it for our Student Board Reports.
Thank you very much, Scott. So we're going to start from the end of the D I S with the trustee Lynn.
Trustee Lynn, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you please turn your mic on?
All right, good evening, Board Members, Staff, and the community members. For this holiday season, I was able to provide ninety-five lunch boxes for the unhoused member of the Mel Peters community and a quick meeting with the public safety, emergency preparedness, subcommittee to prepare to discuss about the programs and projects for our city. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Clerk, no, please, can you share with us?
Sure, thank you, folks. What we heard today from the Executive Cabinet was the the fact that they had to help substitute and fill in the staffing needs and many others at the district office. And so concerning that as new information, along with Gavin Newsom, Governor Gavin Newsom's extension of Assembly Bill three sixty-one, I would like to request an Agenda Superintendent Jordan, a revisit of the A B three sixty-one implementation.
Thank you.
Concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I have a report from Vice President Chris Norwood?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, from my report, it's quick. I attended a flag raising ceremony by the Double Tenth Celebration Committee of the Republic of China in celebration of New Year's Day. Superintendent Jordan and I met with a potential donor investor for the Innovation Campus, and then I attended the Chamber Ambassador and Board Directors Meeting. Okay, so we move on to item sixteen, Reports, Learning and Development, and Presentation on English Language Proficiency Assessment for California and the M U S D English Learner Master Plan. The Executive Director of Learning and Innovation.
I'll go ahead and introduce Ms. Sugimura. Yvonne's here this evening to share information around the assessments that have been conducted this year in terms of our English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, that's the L P A C acronym, including the initials, the summative, and the alternate. She's also been to review the English Language Master Plan, which was worked on this year, which is part of our work for C S A S and L C A P.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Good evening, Board President Yip Chuan, esteemed Board Members, Superintendent Jordan, and Executive Cabinet. My name's Yvonne Sugimura, and I am the Coordinator of English Learners, Literacy, and Intervention. Last time I was in front of you, that was the day that I got my job offer, and now I'm back, and I'm really humbled and excited to be here. So one of my areas is to support our English learners across our district. Next slide. And so we want to just give you a brief overview. So taking a look at a snapshot, a total students involved with M U S D, we have ten thousand one hundred and sixty-six. Of that total number, we have a total of two thousand three hundred and seventy students that are identified as English learners. This year, for our fall semester, we had three hundred eighty-six students who are identified as possible candidates for reclassification. That means that they met the criteria of an overall L P A C score last year when they took the summative L P A C in the spring of a four, and they also met a secondary criteria of an I-ready score and/or an S R I score at the high school level. And in a future Board Meeting date, we will be actually fine-tuning and taking a look at that specific data as part of our L C A P mid-year update as well. Of the total number of our English learners in our district, four hundred forty-six of them are identified as what we call at-risk. That means that they, once they were initially identified, they are currently in year four or five, still designated as an English learner. Of that two thousand three hundred and seventy, we have six hundred and thirteen of our students identified as L T Ls. L T Ls are students that are long-term English learners, meaning that they are six years plus designated as an English learner within our school district. Part of our progress monitoring also is that once a student is reclassified, we are obligated to monitor them to make sure that they are still making adequate progress in their English language development. And so of our total student population, we are currently monitoring one thousand one hundred and thirteen students who have been recently R F F'd in the past. Next slide, please. And so for this school year, when we take a look at our initial L P A C data, we have six hundred and ten students who we had to administer the initial L P A C. That means usually it tends to be our youngest students, transitional kindergarteners or kindergartners. So they are students who are newly enrolled into a public school. Based on when they enroll, they fill out what we call Home Language Survey. And if they indicate another language that is spoken at home, we then initiate an initial L P A C. Now, some students, depending on if they're coming from another country and enrolling with us, we also administer our initial L P A C in whichever grade level that they are rolling. Again, administer when they are enrolling first time in a public school. And so for this year, again, we administered to six hundred and ten students. And here is just a breakdown of the ethnicities of the students that we administered the L P A C to. Next slide, please. So a snapshot, when we take a look at the six hundred and ten students that we administered the initial L P A C to, two hundred and thirty-five of the students identified as I F F. That means that they identify as initially fluent English proficient. Of the six hundred and ten, three hundred and seventy-five students were identified as English learners. That means based upon their performance on the initial L P A C, they are now identified as an English learner, and that as a district will be supporting their instruction to develop their English language proficiency. If you take a look at the right graph, it breaks down that three hundred and seventy-five initial identified students, one hundred and forty-eight of that three hundred and seventy-five receiving the overall score of intermediate, meaning that they have somewhat moderately developed oral and written English skills. And sometimes they're able to use English to learn and communicate in meaningful ways. Two hundred and twenty-seven students scored an overall of novice. And that means that they are at the beginning level of developing oral and written English skills, and they are able to use known words and phrases to communicate at a basic level. Next slide, please. So this year, we did take a look at revamping our English Learner Master Plan. And so here, we're going to give you kind of a timeline of where we've been in the past and where we currently are. Next slide. So prior to the new English Master Plan that is being presented, the previous current one was adopted back in two thousand and five. That was a time ago. So changes, it was clear that changes needed to take place and update it in our English Master Plan to ensure that we are supporting our English learners. And so some things to note. The C D E adopted and updated the English Language Development Standards in twenty twelve. The E O D standards are aligned and integrated within the E L A standards. Students are now classified as emerging, expanding to bridging versus by levels previously. And the C D E created the English Learner Roadmap in twenty seventeen to guide districts and better meeting the needs of E Ls. So it takes us to current day. So M U S D, to adjust, we had to make the adjustment to ensure that we are supporting our English learners. So we have updated and developed, developed and updated our E L Master Plan to reflect the changes to ensure that the needs of our E Ls are being met. As we tie it back to our strategic goals, we want to make sure that we developed a very transparent document to ensure that we are focused on services and support systems to meet all the needs of our students in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. And we also wanted to make sure that we engage all of our stakeholders, our parents, our staff, and our community partners to ensure that we are all working together to meet the needs of our English learners and to ensure their success. Also, if you take a look at our L C A P goal, our L C A P one goal states that we strive to ensure that our students will receive standards-based instruction, curriculum, and assessments by highly qualified teachers, and our English learners, as one of the subgroups, will make accelerated growth to close the achievement gap. Hence, the need for us to update our English Learner Master Plan. Next slide, please. So here's kind of like the highlights of our English Learner Master Plan. So the main one is the fact that now we incorporate the English Learner Roadmap. So that is part of the beginning of our English Learner Master Plan. We also have now included the identification process of our E Ls as it is specifically defined. The programs are identified to support E Ls within the various grade levels. Guidelines are provided for our duly identified students. These students are those who are designated as an English learner and also receive special education. We also establish clear guidelines for the criteria to have a student reclassified as fluent English proficient. We also establish clear guidelines for the criteria to have a student reclassified as fluent English proficient. And then the roles and responsibilities of sites, staff and families are clearly defined within the master plan. And next slide, please. And so when the master plan was drafted, it was brought to our District English Language Advisory Committee, that is our D lack for approval. Our D lack committee is comprised of an E lack member from each of our individual school sites. And our E lack stands for the English Language Advisory Committee at each of the sites. And so this was presented to our D lack, again comprised of all the elected E lack members from the individual sites on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And at that point, it was motioned to approve and it was approved unanimously. Okay, next slide. So that is a quick synopsis of our English learner data, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Yvonne, for the presentation. Scott, do we have any comments, public comments?
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, there's no hands raised for the public comments, board members. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yvonne, welcome. Thank you so much for deep diving and welcome to M U S D. We are a community of multi-language, and the thing I have about your long-term English learners. Can you tell me a little bit more about some of the programs that we have to help support those students?
Yes, so it varies by site. And so when we take a look at our L tells, we're taking a look at six years plus. And so they could start as young as we would say. Fifth grade, right? If they started and were identified as a kindergartner and then go on to high school. And so specific programs, our sites can develop on their own. But typically, what you can see is various sites will be able to provide specific intervention. Teachers are able to then group students based upon their various needs as well. So that is provided from their certificate, like their classroom teacher within in the school day. At our middle schools, they also have specific programs that they use to support our L tells as well. And we do have, for example, at Rancho, we have a Tosa that supports specifically our L tells. And so she is a teacher that does E L D instruction and also supports students who with small group instruction and intervention. And then when we take a look at the high schools, that's it's designed a little bit differently. And so our students there can be placed in a sedate class where a teacher is teaching them with specific strategies. And we also have specific classes. And actually, for this year, we're actually in the middle of a pilot to ensure that the instructional practices are rigor rigorous and then consistent across those classes at the high school level as well. And so it does vary depending on the need of the student and by site.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Good job.
Yeah, actually, I have a question.
Good job, thank you.
Yes.
Yvonne, can you tell me from the elementary school, like what percent of the elementary school students will? You know, maybe, I don't know, is it graduate or go out or? Gets promoted outside of that program and then also at the middle school and high school?
So it's going to vary. So within Milpitas, we start the reclassification consideration starting in third grade. And so the percentages, of course, our goal is to ensure that our students are being reclassified. Because if they are being considered for reclassification, it means that we are doing our part to ensure that they are developing their English language proficiency. And and so with that being said, it's going to vary year by year. You know, unfortunately, kind of in the midst of the pandemic, at the moment, we are adjusting and meeting different needs currently. So we're making sure that we're we're meeting their basic needs, right, of social, emotional first, where before we can build upon the rigor and the academic piece. And so ideally, our goal is to reclassify students starting at third grade, the first year. But it's a kind of a two band because meeting overall score on an L pack is one criteria. The other one is performing somewhat at grade level based upon our. E L A benchmark. And so you're probably familiar with our I ready. And so at that point, our students would be somewhat at grade level as the second criteria before we considered them. A candidate for reclassification.
Okay, and then they're like. Programs, I guess, once, because once they're not reclass and they go into middle school and high school, it's going to affect their electives, right? Because they can't take the elective class because they have to be in this, yes, class.
Yes, they are in a specific class to then support their language proficiency. Yes. And so again, our goal is to reclassify them before they get to secondary. Where, yes, if they have not been reclassified, they would continue to take classes to support the English language development.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Sorry again. Thank you for the presentation, of course.
Yvonne, one of the things that you might check in terms of progress is that how many of the middle schoolers? That have to have to continue on in the program are enrolled in avid. At the high school or in the academies? Because there may be multiple strategies that can be utilized within further their language development. That puts them in scenarios where. They have to invest more in their language development and some of those programs. Abid, as well as the academies, require students to do specific things in terms of their language development. As far as the word, but not specific to the language development criteria. So if you could look at those programs, because again, that transition from middle school to high school and having have a specific course specifically for that language, but not. Having the opportunity to do career exploration, college exploration. Those types of things creates a limit, and that's what I think to a certain extent, the spirit of what Madam President was also referring to.
Yes, we also, we always strive to provide as many opportunities for our students as possible. So yes, I could take a look into that. Thank you for the recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Yvonne.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to. Item seventeen, action items, Superintendent's Office, A one.
We have our, we have our resolution for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Which is coming up on Monday. And. Throughout this weekend and into next week, there are many community opportunities for us all to. Take a step and remember that. Dr. King talked about being in service to others and especially lifting up. Those who. Those who don't have somebody who sees them. And also in assuring that we have equity and inclusion, especially for. Our brothers and sisters who are of African ancestry or Latinx. Or Asian. Or Pacific Islander. In other words, those who don't have privilege in the same way that. Does the best for our European ancestry traditionally have. And Mr. Porstner has assembled a group of students to share this resolution with us.
Resolution twenty-two dot two-three, recognizing and honoring January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two as Martin Luther King Junior Day. Whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior was born January fifteenth, nineteen twenty-nine, and whereas in February of nineteen forty-eight, Dr. King was ordained in the Christian ministry. At the age of nineteen at Ebenezer Baptist Church in Atlanta, Georgia, and became Assistant Pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church and. Whereas Dr. King, who attended segregated public schools in Georgia before earning a Bachelor of Arts degree from Morehouse College. A Bachelor of Divinity degree from Crozer Theological Seminary in Pennsylvania and a Doctor of Philosophy degree. And theology from Boston University rose to prominence as a civil rights activist committed to peace, justice and equality and.
Whereas the work of Dr. King created a basis of understanding and respect and helped communities in the United States as a whole. To act properly and courageously to restore tolerance, justice and equality between people. And whereas Dr. King dedicated his life to securing the fundamental principle of the United States of liberty and justice for all United States citizens and.
Whereas Dr. King was a leading civil rights advocate of his time, spearheading the civil rights movement in the United States during the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. And earning worldwide recognition as an elegant and articulate spokesperson for equality and.
Whereas through his work and reliance on nonviolent protests, Dr. King was instrumental in the passage of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. And the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. And whereas Dr. King led the Montgomery, Alabama bus boycott for three hundred eighty-one days to protest the arrest of Rosa Parks and the segregation of the bus system of Montgomery. And on December twenty-first, nineteen fifty-six, the Supreme Court declared laws requiring segregation on buses constitutional unconstitutional and.
Whereas between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-eight, Dr. King traveled more than six million miles, spoke more than two thousand five hundred. And wrote five books and numerous articles supporting efforts around the country to end injustice and bring about social change and desegregation and.
Whereas on August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three, Dr. King led the march on Washington, D.C., the largest rally of the civil rights movement. During which, from the steps of the Lincoln Memorial and before a crowd of more than two hundred thousand people, Dr. King delivered his famous I Have a Dream speech, one of the classic orations in American history and.
Whereas Dr. King was a champion of nonviolence, firmly advocated nonviolent resistance as a strategy to end segregation and racial discrimination in America. And in nineteen sixty-four, at age thirty-five, became the youngest man to be awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in recognition for his efforts. And whereas on the evening of April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight, Dr. King was assassinated while standing on the balcony of his motel room in Memphis, Tennessee. Where he was to lead sanitation workers in protests against low wages and intolerable working conditions and.
Whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, Representative John Conyers introduced legislation to establish the birthday of Martin Luther King Junior as a federal holiday. And whereas in nineteen eighty-three, Congress passed and President Ronald Reagan signed legislation creating the birthday of Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Which is now observed in more than a hundred countries.
Now therefore be resolved that Milpitas Unified School District hereby proclaims January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two as Martin Luther King Junior Day. And encourages all educators to commemorate this day of remembrance with appropriate ceremonies, activities and programs. Passed and adopted by Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two by the following vote.
Thank you, Mr. Porstner.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Doc Resolution twenty-two point two-three, recognizing and honoring January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two as Martin Luther King Junior Day. Thank you very much. Okay, item B, human relations.
Thank you, President Yip Chan. Tonight, as you recall, a couple weeks, more than a couple of weeks ago, but back in December. We put together our sunshine articles from C S C A or California School Employees Association and that of Milpitas Unified School District. So you will have two opportunities tonight to have public hearings to give the public an opportunity. To comment on any of the articles that we're about to present. On behalf of Michelle Kissinger and C S C A, Article thirty-one of the collective bargaining agreement allows the association. To put forth the following articles, Article seven, work year, work week, overtime, Article ten, compensation, Article eleven, vacation leave, Article twelve. Holidays, Article thirteen, leaves, Article twenty, layoffs, Article twenty-seven, safety and property, Article twenty-nine, reclassification. Article thirty, the term of the agreement, as well as the appendix A, B, C and D, C attached. At this time, I'm asking you to conduct a public hearing so that these articles can be brought forth to the community, thus the term sunshine.
Thank you. In accordance with Board Policy forty-one, forty-three point one. Public notice policy for collective bargaining and state bargaining law, a public hearing on the C S C A sunshine proposal to open collective bargaining. With M U S D will be held as at the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two at the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education meeting at seven P M. A notice of public hearing on the C S C A sunshine proposal to open negotiations with M U S D. Has been posted on bulletin boards at all school sites and the district office. I need a motion to open the hearing.
Move to open the hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We have a one-minute clock. We're opening the hearing now.
Okay, we had no hands raised for public comment during that public hearing.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to now close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, President Yip Chan. Now we must do the process again from the district side of proposals for the articles. That are in the collective bargaining bargaining agreement. These articles that we've opened to sunshine for negotiations this coming year are under government code section three, five, four, seven. We will talk about Article seven, work year, work week, overtime, Article ten, compensation, Article eleven, vacation leave, Article twelve, holidays, Article thirteen, leaves. Article fourteen, Labor Management Committee, Article seventeen, performance review, Article eighteen, transfer promotions, Article twenty, layoffs. The three-year reclassification project and appendixes A, B, C as attached in the communication. At this time, we'd like to sunshine these articles for a public hearing.
Okay, in accordance with the Board Policy forty-one, forty-three point one. Public notice policy for collective bargaining and state bargaining law. A public hearing of the district sunshine proposal to open collective bargaining with the C S C A will be held at the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two at the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education meeting at seven P M. A notice of public hearing on the district sunshine proposal to open negotiations with C S C A. Has been posted on bulletin boards at all the school sites and the district office. I need a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The hearing is now open for public comments regarding the articles being proposed by the district to C S C A. Can we get a minute? Okay.
Okay, President Yip Chan, we had no hands raised for public comment during that public hearing.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, there's a, um, a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, President Yip Shuan. And I just want to say thank you to our leader of CSCA, Michelle Kissinger and her team. And we look forward to, uh, conducting another, uh, round of negotiations in the best interest of the employees of our district, as well as for the students of our district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The board accepts the article from the district to be negotiated with CSCA. Okay, uh, we're moving on to item eighteen, consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon the board by one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. So I just wanted to remind you that, um, item eighteen C was pulled early on by Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang. Um, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent items except for, um, eighteen C.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, um, it is eighteen C.
Five.
Five.
I amend my motion to, um, exclude, um, eighteen C five.
Okay, we have a amended motion to, um, uh, approve the consent item except for item eighteen C five. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, uh, dates of future board meetings. Uh, January twenty-fifth, a tentative study session at five PM. Tentative close session at six PM, open session at seven, hybrid, on Zoom, YouTube or boardroom, thirteen thirty-one East Calaveras, Building five hundred. February eighth, tentative study session at five PM, tentative close session at six PM, open session at seven PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube and boardroom, thirteen thirty-one East Calaveras Boulevard, Building five hundred. Um, moving on to item twenty, are there any announcements or reminders? Executive team here, none?
Yes, I have an announcement. On Friday, it is our staff professional day and all staff will be engaged in self-directed professional development on social, emotional learning and wellbeing. And our offices, uh, will not be available.
Thank you, Superintendent. How about board members? Is there any announcements or reminders?
I want to have a reminder to our community to, um, please during this four-week, uh, weekend, uh, be vigilant in how you engage for this week to really be effective so that we can return on Tuesday to really be, uh, as effective as we can as a district.
Okay, thank you. Click no. Anyone else? Is not gonna get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor to adjourn the meeting? Aye. Okay.